All right, we are calling to order the August 11th meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
As always, we start out with a few announcements. Don't forget to save the date for Town and McCannus Community Day, which takes place on September 13th, 2025, and it begins at 1:00 P.M. this year. McCannus Adventure Tickets are on sale at Town Hall for a chance for your child to enter a ride to school in one of McCannus's vehicles. The last day to purchase is September 13th, and that sale will benefit the McCannus 175 Celebration. Join the EAC for All About White Tail Deer on Tuesday, September 30th at 7:00 P.M. at Town Hall, presented by the PA Game Commission biologist, Janine Flegel, learn about deer, the role they play in the environment, and actions to address the challenges these animals compose in communities. There also is the Shining Star Gala coming up on November 1st at the Camelot. More information will come in the upcoming meetings. At this time, are there any other announcements by the members of council? Mr. Wall? Any other announcements from anyone else on council? Seeing none, at this time, we'll move on to the public comment on agenda items. If you have a public comment, please come forward, get your name and address.
Irene Caliendo, 10558 Castle Lane. I would like to take a couple of minutes, if I could, and comment on the proposed lease ordinance. I assume since you've listed as discussion, it's not a public hearing. Okay, so I just want to say, first of all, as someone who has had a lifelong belief that animals and humans should have peaceful coexistence, and you live over there and leave me alone, and I'll live over here and leave you alone. I really appreciate the fact that council is doing this. But I have a question. In the, in B, under 701.10, Control of Dogs, you don't specifically say that the way that the owner has to control the dog is to keep it on the leash. And it would be my personal opinion that unless it's the owner's private property, that the dog has to be on a leash. I know you referenced leash later on, but it's not, to me, I'm not sure that that couldn't be argued by one or another person. Thank you.
For those comments. Any other public comment on agenda?
Ellen Ray, 9635 Old Tumor Road, Allison Park, PA 1501. I'm caught, have comments about under old business, the townhouses on Perry Highway, and I have three or four concerns here. I continue to be concerned that there was no presentation at Planning Commission, and I've done a look at the code, and under 1103.190 F2D, it says that the attendance at the Planning Commission by the applicant or authorized agent is mandatory to provide a presentation. If we look at the minutes for the July 1st, 2025 Planning Commission, they say there was no presentation, so that the first part of the code has not been met. The minutes specifically say that the representative from Port construction did not have a presentation. So I don't understand how it got to Town Council without a presentation. I'm still concerned about why this is a minor land development. I'm not familiar with how things are classified as minor and major land developments, but the code says that a minor land development has a minimal impact upon traffic, drainage, visual image landscaping, buffering, lighting, and Planning Commission's concerns were all about the traffic. So it seems like traffic alone would push it into a major land development, and the concerns about the fill. Gateway refers to it in their June 30th letter as a minor land development, and then two of the three letters on July 24th just say land development. So it doesn't, and the motion itself says land development, it doesn't classify what kind it is. And so if you don't say, if it's not clear what kind it is, how do you know if the ordinance is being followed? And why is it a minor land development? Then for both, all kinds of developments, it seems that that the plans need to be submitted to the Allegheny County Conservation District for a review, and it's the applicant's responsibility, and that all those things have to be done prior to Town Council's approval. And according, let's see, the MPC that in accordance with the MPC, the Town Council shall not approve an application until the Allegheny County Department of Economic Development report or of its recommendation is received, or until after 30 calendar days. So I haven't seen anything, I haven't heard anyone mention about the Allegheny County Department of Economic Develop- Allegheny, yeah, Department of Economic Development reviewing these plans. I looked at the video from the Blazer Drive, the last Planning Commission, and they reference what the Allegheny County Department had said about Blazer Drive. I haven't heard anything about what they're saying about this one. And then I'm still curious if the neighbors have been notified at the Planning Commission on July 1st. They, Gateway said the neighbors were notified, something maybe about stormwater, but that the townhouse notification happened later on in the process. I'm not sure when that happens, and I'm not sure if they've been notified. So in summary, because it's contrary to McCannus's code, not having a presentation at Planning Commission, it's unclear about what kind of land development plan, it's unclear as to why this land development with questions about traffic fill and landslides, it's not a major land development. There's no evidence of review by the county, which McCannus's code, actually, which the MPC requires prior to a council vote, and because there was no presentation, there are major questions about traffic fill and the suitability of the soil. No evidence that the county has been, has reviewed. I request the council reject this motion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments evening on agenda items? Seeing none, we will continue on with the previous meeting minutes for the July 28th. Were sent to all members of council, or had a public need to review their motion to approve this. There has been a motion to approve the July 28th meeting minutes, is there a second? Second, Mr. Arlo, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 One abstention from Mr. Hart. The motion carries, thank you. Moving on to reports of committees, reported the Public Safety Committee, staff reports, the chief's report is included in your packet. Do you want to, any highlights for us tonight, Chief?
I could be brief, Mr. President. For the month of July, the police department, a couple of highlights off my report. We began a new software program for our reporting system downstairs. As far as training goes, in the month of July, our K9 attended his monthly training, you might see that attached to the report. He had some nice perch and grass, he chose his training as he starts his journey with his new partner, or continues it, rather. We had one successful deployment under very unfortunate circumstances. He did successfully locate an individual that was unfortunately deceased. Also, training related, we sent a detective to team leader development training. He's a part of the North Hills SRT. We also had a detective that completed active shooter response training. Unfortunately, these days, we have to be as prepared as we can for those circumstances. We also sent an officer to six hour armor, armor certification, but he'll be able to help problems with firearms and such. Also, in the month of July, our social worker, we were able to refer 32 individuals to our social worker. So she continues to try to help the community in that regard. Near the end of the month, myself and Lieutenant Eric Agley attended a meet and greet with the Northern Allegheny County Rotary Club. They provided us, I believe, 20 very nice duffel bags with our patch on them that we can hand out to victims of domestic violence. They have some very basic necessities in there for folks who might need things, such as, you know, toothbrush, toothpaste, blanket, just some, just some essentials. So it was very nice of them, very kind gesture. And finally, as I've been touching on in recent months, our police department in July took, I'll say at least 27 calls relating to deer. We have on record that Big Daddy also removed eight deer in the month of July. I'm sure there are more than that that go unreported, but those are official stats for deer in July. Any questions for council?
No questions. Okay, moving on to the Fire Marshal's report, also including your packet. Jeff, a brief little highlight for us.
We'll get this right one of these days. So I'll start with the Fire Marshal side. There were 15 fire code inspections, 21 fire marshal callouts. Taught two fire prevention programs, two for 52 little tykes, we'll call them. Had a good time seeing fire trucks. And continue to work on emergency management items. Planning, finished planning the National Lightout Safety Plan, which I think went off really well. Fortunately, we had some wonderful weather, and everything pretty much went, like I said, without a hitch. Still working on the Community Day Safety Plan, working on pre-plans for the fire service, kind of ramp that back up. Slipped in the fireside, this is for the month of June. There were 134 total calls within the town, 58 of them being medical. Again, fire alarms, basically, commercial fire alarms and motor vehicle accidents continue to be the two top types of calls that we respond to. We had additional 44 responses out of town for a total of 178 calls for the month of June. Anything? Is there any questions? Any questions for Mr. Wilson?
Seeing none, that's all, thank you, Jeff. The building permits report was in your packet. If there's any questions, Mr. Schwinn will be able to get back to him then. Continuing on to liaison reports, the Personnel Board, Mr. Wall. Thank you very much. Volunteer firefighter steering committee, Mr. Hart.
Oh, the meeting minutes are in your packet, and Mr. Schwinn was the chair of that.
Thanks, thank you very much. Is there any public comment on public safety? Please.
I really wanted to compliment Jen from the police department, they did a stellar job in putting together National Lightout. And, you know, it was really good to see every one of the first responders, the fire companies were there. Yes, our team people were there, the police were there, the ambulance was there. It was a sight to see, and it was really a great representation of who we are as a community.
Thank you, extend my thanks to that. Thank you, Mr. Wall. Seeing no public comment, we will continue on to reports of facility management, staff reports, public works. That was in your packet with Brad. Any highlights for us here this evening?
Just a couple of things, we wrapped up our 25 base repair program, and started on our 2026. All paving for the town for 25 will be done this week. We did the electrical update over at Devlin, and ordered our first round of salt, so been excited for winter time. Any questions?
Thank you, thank you, Brad, appreciate it. Moving on to liaisons and reports, environmental advisory committee, Mr. Giorgietti is not here this evening, but those meeting minutes were in your packet, I believe. If you have any questions, they can be asked of him when he returns. Ad hoc tech committee, Mr. Wall, there was no meeting, as well as the ad hoc stormwater management committee, there was no meeting. Is there any public comment on facilities management? Seeing none, continuing on to the reports of the Services Committee, liaison reports, McCannus Township Sanitary Authority, Mr. Casey.
Reports in your packet, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Casey? Seeing none, we're going to continue with you again, Mr. Casey, for the McCannus Franco Park Ambulance.
I'm pleased to report that they were happy with our offer from the letter that John sent them last month. Also, I'm pleased to report that effective August the 1st, they broke a very bad agreement they had with one of their insurance carriers, and that will increase their revenues if they got paid by 100% of the participants by $216,000 a year. And they have one more contract they need to look at, which will also help with the revenue.
For that report, Mr. Casey, any questions for Mr. Casey? Seeing none, Northland Public Library Authority, again, Mr. Giorgietti is out of town. They are getting closer, is what I would tell you. Construction is always a fun thing to deal with, but they're getting there, and I'm sure we will see a new Northland open up shortly. Is there any public comment on services? Seeing none, moving on to old business, this was the action concerning the Perry Highway Townhomes. We saw this last month. Developments here, we had discussion, we had some more time for people to look at it, and we're looking for a motion on the action concerning these townhomes.
Motion to approve, reject the land development application for the Perry Highway Townhomes submitted by Dawn Pol construction, located Block Lot 1071-E-96 contingent upon all items being addressed as identified in Town Engineers Review Letter, July 24, 2025, and any other subsequently issued review letters.
There has been a motion, is there a second?
I will second.
Seconded by Mr. Casey, any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider, continue, yeah, continuing on. We have, the first up here is the lease ordinance. Mr. Schwinn has put this, we saw this last month, more of an idea-based form. You're seeing it this month in more of a formal form. We're hoping that will be next meeting, or we're not looking for-
We'll have to see what the advertising schedule is to be able to put this in the paper. It may not make it in time for the next meeting, it may be the first meeting in September.
Okay.
This, or, we did put the notes from last month's meeting into a draft of an ordinance form. I appreciate the comments that were made with the questions about this, and the intention of the way this is written is exactly what you said. On, on a private property, dog owners are responsible for controlling their dogs, ensuring they do not run at large, and for cleaning up after them. Now, item C says dogs must be contained to their owner's property. Tying in that leash regulation off of your own property. Unlawful for a dog to run at large on public or private property in the town, so it must be on leash. Dog parks are designated areas where they must be, and any dogs who are off leash, off of the property, you know, could be subject to the penalties in this. So if there's a way that we need to tighten up the verbiage in that better, the intention is definitely for, you know, exactly what you had mentioned.
Yeah, you have to be careful, because you have places that reside in the kennels that are inside the park, that are off which areas.
Yeah, there's an exception in there.
Then the next thing, you know, ten feet's a long way. That feed is a huge, it's a huge way.
It's a long leash, but I think to get something started, I think, you know, we'll start at 10, we can always revisit it. I think the thought process is to put something in there for now. If you remember from last meeting, John researched multiple, where there's 10, 6, 8, 4, 12, 15, 20, they're all over the place, so throw a dart at a board and kind of see where we're at. I, I too am a little leery about 10, but I also know if we go to 6, somebody's going to say, we should have been at 10.
I have three wire harnesses, and I can tell you, first of all, that you have a wire rider, and they're high-strung, 10 feet, it's a, it's a long way.
The way I thought about it as a dog owner myself is, a lot of people use the zip leashes, and the standard of those is a 10-foot leash. So that's what I based it in my mind, typical hand non retractable leash is 6, but I know a lot of people use the auto winds, and they are 10, so.
You need 10 to train.
Yeah, and that's, when training, you have 10.
You need 10 feet.
So I think start at 10, and let's see.
Yeah, the idea of putting a limit on is so that you don't have that person who says, well, I tied him to a 100-foot rope, they're on a leash. Nobody's going out to measure 6, 8, or 10 feet. The idea is, keep them close enough to you that you can control them. So that's why we went with that number.
Okay, may I, um, this is Trish. I agree with the public comment about item B, where it says controlling their dog, there is no mention of the word leash in that statement. And I do, I have talked to dog owners in my own neighborhood who have said to me, don't worry, he's always under my control with my voice command. And so-
How about if we add a line in B, after it says, and cleaning up for them, there was a typo where it says clearing up after them. It'll read, instead of what it reads currently, it'll read, dog owners are responsible for controlling their dogs and ensuring they do not run at large, and for cleaning up after them. On public property, dogs must be on leashes.
Yeah, I would appreciate-
Property is the street, that's the park.
Very clear, yep.
Okay, that makes it clear.
And we'll make sure the solicitor runs through it, cleans it up for legality.
He, he did clean this up.
Okay.
He cleared it up.
But we'll clean it up.
We'll clean it up next.
Okay.
If you're okay with that change in the verbiage, I will request to be authorized to advertise the agents.
They're pretty good with that. It's not a, we don't need to vote on it, we're not going to vote on this one.
You can directly.
Yeah, it's just a direction to go ahead and move forward with it for advertising. Next item on here was the discussion concerning the solicitation ordinance. Again, we saw kind of the notes of this last meeting, this is a more formal, you can see the highlights on there. Any questions on this same thing, we're looking for a-
Yeah.
Please.
What are the things that are exempted?
I, I don't want to answer that directly, because I might not list them properly right now, but there's general exemptions. I've talked to you about religious exemptions, politics or exemptions, kids who are selling, that's already exempted, and Steve, you may know the law a little bit better than I do, so.
Anyone else have any questions, concerns? And we, can we authorize John to-
I will reiterate, my concerns are with a different ordinance that we have, and that is-
It's-
We have a work, you have a work permit ordinance for sound. We allow workmen, and it's down to work from 6:00 AM until 11:00 o'clock. It's way too long. Every neighbor in this place will tell you, if you had somebody using a jackhammer at 10:30 at night, they'd drive everybody crazy. But yet, it's legal right now.
It's on our list update this year.
Okay, thank you.
So if everyone's good with the solicitation, can we authorize John to send it for, keep the ball rolling? Good with that, please?
Just, yes.
Okay.
And Steve, these ordinances are Class C ordinances, right? Class C ordinance does not require a public hearing. We can advertise this, and the public can make comments the night that we're going to vote on.
Okay. That wraps our old business, giving you direction, moving on to new business. Actually, concerning the award of the North Meadows Driveway Sidewalk Project. John, do you want to tee this up here for us?
I will, this is a project that's been years in the making, through some grant dollars, and through design, and somewhat complicated at the end. A right-of-way arrangement, that I'll be happy to say that Councilman Casey was able to get across the finish line at the 11th hour. We're in a position where we can award this project and put the sidewalk in on both sides of North Meadow Drive. The bids came in significantly lower than the engineer's estimate. The engineer's estimate was approximately $315,000. Our total for a base bid, which was the southern side, and alternate bid one, which was the northern side, totals $197,820. There is, you know, as you saw the bid forms in your packet, you could see what everybody bid, we had a good number of bidders. We did have two bidders who used the incorrect bid sheet, which did not include all of the bid items. Their bids had to be rejected, because they did not use the proper form. Therefore, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the project is Kishmo Inc. In the amount of $83,060 for the base bid, and $114,760 for add alternate one, for a total of $197,820.
Just to summarize, we do have a grant for this as well, correct?
Grant covers $142,000 approximately of that $197,000.
Great, is there somebody willing to make that motion?
I would love to make that motion.
Mr. Casey?
I'd like to make a motion to award the base bid in the amount of $83,060, and alternate bid number one in the amount of $114,760 for the 2025 North Meadow Drive Sidewalk Project to Kishmo Inc., for a total contract price in the amount of $197,820.
There has been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hart, any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Liaison, motion carries, thank you. Last item under new business is the appointment of the McCannus 175 Committee members. Mr. Schwinn, do you want to review this for us?
Certainly, Abby Lacoste, Parks and Rec Director, and I completed interviews for applicants. I thought we'd have a significant number more of applicants than we did, but we had quality applicants, and that was important. The folks were listed in the packet for you to take a look at. Well, I think we have a pretty good representation of different, you know, not only residents with interests in the community, but also some of the businesses and other organizations that are part of our history. So we have a representative from LaRoche, we have one from North Allegheny School District, the HCC, we have a new resident, somebody who's been here only for about a year, but had experienced a committee similar to this, and somewhere they lived before, and they were excited to be part of this. We have Mike from MFPA, who volunteered to be as part of the committee, a member from the Sisters of the Divine Providence. Jeff from the EAC is going to represent, but he's also going to throw in some other members from the EAC from time to time. Alice is familiar with the NA Foundation and the Library Foundation. Chief Quachak of Inglemore Volunteer Fire is going to bring a fire perspective to this. Representative from the Passive and Hospital Foundation, somebody from the Allegheny County Rangers, the Park Rangers Group, that's Brayden, and then Amy Steele of the Northland Library. So I think we have a good mix, we have a lot of diversity when it comes to different institutions that have a historic representation in town.
Are you going to add anybody to this?
So my recommendation was to council representatives, I think Ms. Clunin would like to be one of those representatives, and then we could choose one other representative from council who, you know, might want to get involved in this, who might not be involved in a lot of other of our ad hoc committees right now. And then two or three representatives from staff, Abby and myself being two of those, and possibly a third as well.
We think we'd let you pick your staff choices for that.
Okay.
And just from my understanding, this is, this does represent everyone who applied, there is no one we're
Correct.
not taking. And this is more of a committee, basically, a organizational committee. This doesn't need to say that if more people want to get involved in a volunteer effort as the event comes around, that will be separate, we'll be seeking-
Yeah, think of this as your steering committee, and then we'll definitely need more volunteers and help as time goes on.
So I see it as, kind of off your question, because I had the same thought process, you know, what if more people want to get involved? There's going to be more opportunities, this is more of a steering committee, planning board for it. It's my understanding of it. I think we do need a vote, that was what we talked about last time.
To accept the appointment on the McCannus 175 Committee members, as had been the-
There has been a motion for that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Casey. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, is there any public non-agenda comments?
Hi, good evening. Marsha Kelly, under one oh five two nine Abbey Lane. I just have a general comment regarding ordinances. They're great, but we need to enforce them. I mean, we have a signed ordinance that nobody pays any attention to and there's no repercussions on who puts a sign. Well, and council comes says, well, we can't enforce it because it's on a county road or a state road. So if someone is, doesn't have their dog on a leash, walking down route nineteen, can you not enforce it because it's a state road? So I just, you know, these are great and ten feet is way too much. I agree with you, Jeff. But anyway, it's, it's what's enforceable, what's not. I know some of it's going to help keep park. But enforce what we currently have on the books and then add more and enforce them. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
I'll just say I encourage you to definitely get ahold of us on any signs. We can enforce that sign ordinance on those roads, so point something out to us if we miss it. We have drivers out frequently, but.
Okay, but John, we've done it numerous, numerous times and we were saying, oh, it's a county road, you can't enforce it.
Understood. We, part of our new staffing here and Matt's big part of this is proactive and also reactive. We want you to tell us what it is and we'll do what we can about it. Our code enforcement officer is awesome right now. He loves going out and finding this. He's really good. So, you know, he may not love the answer he gets from the residents when he has to tell them this all the time, but if it's something within our purview that we can take care of, we absolutely can.
I know exactly what you're talking about, too.
Any other public non-agenda comments?
Ellen Wright, nine, six, three, five, Old Tumor Road, Allison Park, PA, one, five, one, oh, one. I, I know you guys are busy. I know you put a lot of time into council and the other things you serve on. And I would just have to echo the comment about how it's important to enforce the ordinances. So, and if you want to cut me off, fine, but the ordinance says attendance at town council meeting by the applicant is mandatory. I do not see a representative here tonight from pole construction. And the ordinance says that their attendance is mandatory. So how are we picking which and for which ordinances to enforce and which ones not to enforce? How can we ask anybody in the town to follow an ordinance if council itself is not enforcing the ordinances for themselves?
He did attend the last meeting.
He is not here for the day of the vote. Among all the other things I said that were not followed with the ordinance, he is not here for today. How can we ask anybody in the town to follow any ordinance if council is not following the ordinances? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public non-agenda comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? There's been motions, there are second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Arlo, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Motion carries.